Would be fully funded by OPS.
Be fully funded by OPS, okay.
Okay. Roll call, Mr. Ray.
America?
Yes.
Scanlon?
Aye.
Snow?
No.
Vargas?
No.
Wayne?
No.
Williams?
Aye.
Fay?
Aye.
Gotti?
Aye.
Five aye.
Okay, motion carries. Is there now another motion, Mr. Wayne? Do you have? Do you have another motion?
Can't, no. Point of order. There's an amendment on the floor. The amendment was to change my vote, so now you have to vote on my vote before we go to the next vote.
Right, we did need to vote on that. So can you read that motion?
The motion on the floor-
The motion that Mr. Wayne? We approved the amendment, so now we're going to go back to Mr. Wayne's.
Mr. Wayne's motion was to move to support the Kennedy Plan presented excluding the SIG grant with the direction to staff to apply for an additional $250,000 per year for five years. That was Mr. Wayne's initial.
Point of order. Point of order. So what needs to happen now is that my motion has been changed to Ms. Williams' motion, so we need to do a roll call vote on Ms. Williams' motion, and that'll clarify everything. So, Madam President, if you would call a roll call, it'll be on the exact same language we just voted on, which would be changing of my motion, would be the exact same language that Ms. Williams just voted on.
That is correct.
That is correct. So, a roll call vote on Ms. Williams' motion, which amended Mr. Wayne's motion. So we're voting twice. So we're voting again.
Okay.
We voted for the amendment, now we're voting on the motion of the amendment.
Scanlon?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Vargas?
Aye.
Wayne?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Fay?
Aye.
Gotti?
Aye.
America?
Aye.
Eight aye.
Motion carries. Okay, now, Mr. Wayne, do you have another motion for us?
I don't have it this time.
Okay. All right, with that, I think we're done. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
That's very exciting.
Very exciting. Thank you. Appreciate it. While I'm here, I want to take a moment to really thank you guys for the hard work you put into this. You've hung with us for a while, through a lot of presentations, and really forced us through our homework about what's best for kids in the city. So I'm very thankful of the thought and the consideration you put into it. So we really appreciate it.
So I am going to go back, just in case anybody did want to make a motion on the SIG, just to give them the opportunity to make a motion on a SIG grant for Kennedy. So does anyone? And Mr. Evans has one quick comment.
Thank you, Madam President. I think what staff wanted to provide the board, it got rather complex, I thought it was going to be fairly simple, was we had a plan, a well-worked plan with the community to move forward on 75 North. The board's now approved that well-worked plan. What the staff had wanted to give the board an opportunity to is when the rules changed two and a half weeks ago on a school improvement grant, did the board want to provide additional funding through the school improvement grant? That was really all staff wanted to do. If the board doesn't want to apply for that, we don't have to. What the staff has heard from a couple of board members at the table who are here right now in the past is that we left money on the table, that you're leaving money on the table, and so we want to give you that opportunity to not leave money on the table. So that's why it's here. Like I say, it got rather complex, but I didn't think it was that complex to begin with. If you don't want to, we understand and we're okay with that, too. If you want to, then we'll apply for those dollars and we'll have an opportunity for additional assets and resources that we're eligible for. So that's really what staff's thinking was.
Okay, so do any board members want to make a motion? Ms. America?
Okay, trying to combine everyone's thoughts that I've heard here. I would move that our board directs staff to appropriate, is the only word I can think of, $200,000 towards the 75 North plan that we just approved at Howard Kennedy through general fund appropriations, SIG grant funding, and/or other funding opportunities.
Second.
So can I explain what I'm trying to say?
Go ahead, Ms. America.
So basically, I'm saying, yes, we should, the district should step up and put funding into this, and show that we are really committed to being part of this project, but giving us the flexibility to apply for a SIG grant. We have until June 1st to do that. It's not saying we have to go out and do it tomorrow. I'm saying, give us the flexibility to look at doing that, consider doing that, or to see if there's any other, if there are other funding opportunities, take advantage of those as well, because we may be able to find funds through some other program or some other source that could go to that as well. And then if we get $100,000 from a SIG grant or from another grant, then the district needs to find the rest of the $100,000 that our board directs to commit.
Mrs. Fay?
That was my question, if there was, through whatever funding, if we didn't total $200,000, if the district would make up the difference.
Okay, any other discussion?
Doesn't the conceptual-
Mr. Wayne?
Doesn't the conceptual that we just approved already outline that, considering that the PowerPoints already said that we were going to apply for SIG and use money towards, and it has a budget in which we're using money for? So I think the motion's redundant.
I don't think we- Ms. America?
I don't think so, because it's saying, we were very, we all sounded very concerned about if we apply for a SIG grant and we don't get the full $200,000, it's going to hurt our schools, what are we going to do? And what my motion is saying is if we apply for a SIG grant and we don't get the full $200,000, our district is going to step up and fund the rest of it.
So I think the SIG was excluded in the previous, we were just talking about the concept of the program. So, Mr. Ray, can you read that motion and then?
A board directs staff to provide additional $200,000 with the possibility of funds through general fund or grant funds?
Okay, so what did the original motion? What was it? Okay, so let's stick with that original wording. SIG grants or other additional funding opportunities?
I have a question.
He's typing.
I just have a question, sorry. Yeah. So why are we appropriating X, Y, or Z funds, whoever, to Kennedy? Why are we not also doing the same thing for Wakanda if they're in similar boats of school turnaround and applying for, and they're creating plans for school turnaround efforts? Why are we singling out just Kennedy in this motion? Seems-
Right, probably because we're talking about Kennedy.
Yeah, that seems a little, it seems unfair.
Ms. Williams?
It's not on you, I'm just putting it out there.
So I guess my thought was, as Mr. Wayne was talking about, we need to kind of, and no, and not his terms, so don't quote me, but saying that we need to make an investment early on, I think this provides us the opportunity to make the investment without relying on SIG grant or any other grant, but because at the end of this, we're still going to be responsible for making sure that this is self-sustaining and we're paying for it. So I think that, for me, that provides that opportunity for us to support that early on as opposed to later.
Well, then can we, can we change that? Can we? Because I think if that, for me, that's not the intention, at least what I got from Mr. Wayne. The intention was that, as a district, we need to think, we need to reallocate our resources to do school turnaround, and that should be for all of our school turnaround efforts. Why would we just do it for one school? Why don't we reallocate $500,000 to school turnaround efforts? To build our capacity to do school turnaround, which then would, and would equitably include the efforts to support Kennedy and Wakanda.
And that's a great point, but this conversation is only about Kennedy.
I, that's why I'm putting it out there as a question.
Right.
And so that, I think, one, for the public to hear, but two, also for the work that all the school turnaround teams are doing, and I think it's an important question. I want to make sure they understand that.
So Mrs. Fay and I are on the Budget Committee, and we just had our first meeting today, and so that's definitely something that we can, you know, have that conversation with Mrs. Kenoke regarding that whole school turnaround piece and priorities for the board. Mr. Scanlon?
I guess my opinion is that we've just got a new CFO onboard, and we're changing, we're starting to shift towards classroom priority-based budgeting, and to start trying to nitpick, you know, what dollars have to go where, I think it'd be wise if the board were to allow the new CFO and the Budget Committee to do their job and start discussing those on the committee level and come back with a recommendation to the board. I don't think allocating certain funds tonight is a good idea.
Mr. Wayne?
This is part of what I was trying to avoid, because we've already allocated Title I Head Start Dollars of $1 million, according to the conceptual. That's right here before us. But that's exactly why I wanted two different funding streams, because if we start using general fund budgets for Kennedy, then why aren't we, that argument about Wakanda is right on point, and we can't make a motion on Wakanda because the public hasn't been noticed about it. So we're kind of stuck. But to Mr. Scanlon's point, we've already committed Title I Head Start Dollars today. I can't support this motion because we didn't do it for Wakanda, and we're using the same funding source.
So, Mrs. Kenoke-
We're working on the school budgets now, for the school building budgets, with using the equity formula, and then we're working with the Budget and Finance Committee to show them what our revenues are and what our expenditures are and where we're going with it. So we will take this into consideration when we're working on the budget, and then when we present it to you, you can make your suggestions.
Mrs. Fay?
Perhaps the, perhaps an idea would be to table this discussion about funding, applying for a SIG grant, until we have a little bit more information. It doesn't seem like we have, A, enough information, B, any kind of consensus, or C, a plan. So it seems very reactionary, and I want to be thoughtful about how we do this, and to, I've heard, you know, Mr. Vargas make similar requests, which I know at board meetings have supported, about having this kind of overall plan for how, and so I just, for how we're going to fund turnaround schools, or our lowest-performing schools, or however you want to. I'm not saying prolong it a long time, but, you know, we could certainly wait two weeks until we have just some more information, because it just feels, it doesn't feel well-thought-out right now.
So are you asking for it to be tabled?
Hold on a second.
I move to table this discussion, this motion. Do I need a date certain?
Yes.
No.
Well-
Do next meeting?
I move to table this motion.
To the next meeting?
I don't have to have a date certain, right? So I can just table it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Second.
A motion by Mrs. Fay to table this motion that was on the floor, and a second by Mr. Wayne. Mr. Ray, roll call, please.
Scanlon?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Vargas?
Aye.
Wayne?
Aye.
Williams?
No.
Fay?
Aye.
Gotti?
Aye.
America?
No.
Six aye, two no.
Okay, motion carries. With that, we're going to move on to J2D, Letter of Interest for Partnership with Boys and Girls Club. I think, Mr. Wayne, you had questions about this? We're at J2D, Letter of Interest for Partnership with Boys and Girls Club.
Just generally speaking, when we got the project, I mean, 75 North, there was, there was a school name, there was some detail to it, and this could be any school, anywhere, and I know Mrs. Fay and some other board members mentioned kind of matrix on how we're approving these and how we're not. So I was just wanting to get some background information on, do we know schools, do we know, because it's just kind of blanket, you know? I'm okay with blanket, but I just was wondering.
So I'll go to Mr. Evans for the questions on this.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Gilreath was here as the board recalls, and he described it would be a replication of a very similar project to what we have at Mountview. It would be at one of the new schools, but they've not identified schools, so we do not have that information. If the board wants to wait, I can get back with Mr. Gilreath and share with him that you want to wait until we know which specific school. We know it will be one of the new schools, of which, for example, you've got Bell Ryan, Bell Ryan, Dr. Turnquist, am I wrong?
I don't think it's necessarily one of the rebuilt schools, but it is a school that would have a significant addition or expansion, and it could be one of the rebuilt schools, but-
Because he mentioned one of the new schools earlier.
What he, what they were hoping for was one in the north and one in the south, where they said they had the greatest need, but no specific site has been determined.
We can bring it back, though, if the board wants to.
Correct.
Just tell them we'll-
Ms. America?
Maybe I'm confused about our process, but I thought the process we approved was that they submit a letter of intent. You, as the superintendent, essentially let us know that a letter of intent has been submitted, and then they submit the detailed plan, which is then presented to the board. So we don't actually approve the letter of intent?
Well, it's new policy, so I'm going to defer to Mr. Ray on that.
Mr. Ray is looking at Mrs. Neelis Brej, and so Mrs. Fay.
I believe that's correct, and then the other part of that, that I think that we asked for was some sort of, I use the term rubric, but checklist, however, so that, Mr. Evans, when you and your staff go through and either accept or decline a letter of interest, that the board has some idea as to why that was accepted or declined, so that we can go through and say, oh, it met the budget requirements, it has, it aligns with the strategic plan, it identifies the school, so we know why. Or if you decline one, and you let us know a letter of intent was submitted and we declined it, then we can go, oh, this is why, it's very clear, and then we, so that was, that was my understanding of the policy as well.
Dr. Turnquist, I'm going to defer to you on that, because I don't know that I have-
I think Ms. America and Ms. Fay are correct. We can't go forward with actually planning and proposing substantively without a letter of intent first. That was my understanding.
Right. In no way am I jumping in saying you can't do this. I'm just saying that we saw two drastically different letters of intents, and I just want to put it on the board's radar, because at our last meetings about this particular policy, we talked about a matrix and some other things. So I was only raising the point of, those are two drastic different ones, and these are our first two that came in, and they were totally different. So just whatever kind of consistency we can have going forward, that's all I was, that's all I was trying to raise. I mean, I'm still voting, yeah, let's move forward. I mean-
I guess I'm confused now. So we're voting yes to move forward, so when I contact Boys and Girls Club, we're getting additional details about the schools, or we're not getting additional details?
So, Mrs. Neelis Brej, do we need to, I thought we needed to approve this for them to move forward? Is that not-
If I may jump in.
Okay.
It says, "Upon receipt of the community partnership proposal, the superintendent shall convene a formal review of the proposal with a timeframe which he's done. The superintendent shall, upon completion of the process, make a recommendation to the board whether to accept, reject, or seek modification," which, by putting it on consent, that's, I believe, what he did. "Final decision on whether to accept or reject shall rest with the board." "The letter of intent shall submit such LOI to the board for their consideration. The superintendent or superintendent designated will provide the board an update on all LOIs revised. The board shall determine by majority of vote whether the application will be invited to submit a formal written community partnership proposal."
So we are voting on whether or not they should submit a former, a formal proposal on the work that they want to do? Is that correct?
That's correct. So there's a two-step process. Step one is to the superintendent, and then he brings it to you to go to step two. So we are in step one with the intent before you to go to step two.
And let me see if I'm interpreting this right, too, because it is new, and so we're all working at it as a new item. I looked at it as kind of the big picture. It's a letter of intent, it's not a contract. The contract comes back with all the specificity of detail of what our relationship, all that piece is. This is a bigger piece of, here's how it relates to the strategic plan, here's the bullet points that align to the strategic plan, here's the general concept of the project, and in this case, he discussed the Mountview project a lot. I thought that was a good letter of intent, saying this is in general where they're headed, and this is how it lines up with the work you have, and then we'll come back to the board and say, here's the specificity, here's the contractual obligation you'll have if you're willing to approve it, and then we're going to have to sign off on that. We do not have the contractual language. We don't have that yet. So the question is, from my perspective, do we want them to have all of the contractual language and have it come back later, at a later date? Or is the broader overview, where we align it to the strategic plan and give the general parameters of the project in a letter of interest and letter of intent, is that okay? And I'm looking for direction, as much as anything, from what the board would prefer, how they would like to have it, and we're willing to, and I'm willing to go either way.
So, so according to what I heard from Mrs. Neelis Brej, I'm asking for a motion right now to approve the letter of intent, which would then go back to Boys and Girls Club for them to work on, a more detailed contract that would show specificity on locations and the work that would be done, which would then come back to us as a separate vote. But this gives them the knowledge that we're interested in partnering with them before they go off and do a whole bunch of work. So, so is there a motion to accept the Boys and Girls Club letter of intent as presented before us? Motion by Ms. Williams, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Fay. Any discussion?
I have one question.
Mrs. Fay?
Thank you. I've totally lost what my question was. It was really good. I'm kind of tired.
You're going to just let it go, okay? With that, Mr. Ray, oh, Mr. Wayne?
My only point, again, just for clarification, is that we have, this is our second one before this board. So if the public wants to submit a letter of intent, they're going to go Google on our website, letters of intent, and they're going to see samples. One was very, very detailed about Howard Kennedy, one was broad, big, strokes, overview. And I'm, and my point of having this conversation was, I think, either Mr. Evans needs to come to us with a sample of how he's going to do it, or we're just going to leave it case by case, and we're going to get a whole bunch of random different ones. But I think it's, if we're trying to invite community partnerships, we need to be clear on what we're looking for, not just the questions, but good samples, because if I'm out there reading 75 North versus this one, those are totally two different proposals. I don't know if I need to go do my research in the neighborhood and do all that and put it in this one, or do I just do a Boys and Girls Club set and say, all over Omaha, we might do something? I was just trying to provide some clarity for our public.
Mrs. Fay?
I remember. So, so can we assume that when, because, Mr. Evans, because this came before us on the consent agenda, that you are supporting it, that you, that, or just as an example, you wouldn't put a letter of intent on there without, that you didn't support?
That I didn't support, right.
Okay, I just want to make sure that the entire letter of intent process isn't resting on our shoulders and maybe, and then it's in the consent agenda, and then-
No, no.
Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, and of course, and this is maybe the difference with a Kennedy project, too. We do have a model in place in Mountview of, which is referenced in here. It's not, this is kind of a known entity on how this works, and so maybe there's some clarity there that a community member would see if they were going to look this up in these three pages. They'd not only have the three-page document, they'd actually have a facility that's a replica. And so that's the unusual piece here, is you're actually not recreating something, or not creating something, you're recreating something that we're already knowledgeable of.
Ms. Williams?
So what I'm, what I think I'm hearing Mr. Wayne saying is that, Mr. Evans, you just said it's something that we're aware of, but not everybody's aware of, so including more detailed information, so perhaps the Mountview model and the information in, and saying, you know, here is a replica or something, because there's a valid point there. It's, there's not as much detail in this one. And so what are we asking them to do? So just, again, I totally agree with him, keeping it consistent. So if the next letter of intent, making sure that they have that little level of detail, that everyone, no one has to go research and find all this information on their own, because it's easy for us to go, oh, yeah, Mountview, and you can go look it up, or you've been there, but everyone isn't as familiar with that. So I think that's what he was saying.
So, yeah, maybe just coming up with a model of, I don't know, of what it might be, if, they're all going to be different. Mrs. Neelis Brej?
If I might just add a little more clarification, Mrs. Fay, to your question, the policy requires Mr. Evans to update you both on those rejected and non-rejected policies. I would assume a non-rejected or a policy that he'd like to bring in front of you would be updated, but he is still required to update all of you, either way he goes on that particular LOI.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Aye.
Vargas?
Aye.
Wayne?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Fay?
Aye.
Gotti?
Aye.
America?
Aye.
Scanlon?
Aye.
Eight aye.
Motion carries. Next, we're going to move back up to J2B Legislative Update, and Mrs. Fay and Mr. Lindsay.
Well, you all will be glad to know that there are no action items regarding the legislative update. And there, there's kind of a lot going on. It's what we talked about early in the legislative season and how things change really fast. So Mr. Lindsay has, or Rochelle have made themselves available, if you have questions beyond the report that you're here tonight, I'm sure he could give you a day-by-day update if you want to talk to him every day after-
Absolutely.
Stuff happens.
The, I'll just wait and update you day by day. We have just a couple of things we want to update on. One is, just in a larger discussion of OSERS, what is happening there, there's, there are no action items, because there's no language yet for the board to take a look at, or frankly, there aren't finalized concepts yet for the board to take a look at. But there have, just to give you an idea of where the discussions within the committee have been going, there are attempts to further align OSERS and INPERS with respect to benefits going forward, so that, with the idea being that, that teachers, employees throughout the state have roughly the same, or as close as possible, the same retirement benefits. There's continued discussion of moving investment authority from, from the OSERS Board of Trustees to the Investment Officer. There is continued discussion on restructure of the, both the administration and governance of-
of OSERS. Again, the model there they're looking at is the Public Employees Retirement Board, trying to align those as well. And then to, to remove some of the unequal treatment of OSERS from, that OSERS receives relative to Npers when it comes to state funding, they're looking at that as well. They're, at some point, they'll reach a point where the committee will ask an actuary to look at their proposed changes. By legislative rule, they have to have an actuary do that before they can actually adopt those. And then at that point, we'll have a more concrete set of principles, concepts, or possibly language for you to look at, so that OPS Board can take a position on those. On the floor of the legislature, dealing with non-retirement issues, the legislature's been moving a little bit slow right now. Last week was, there was discussion over comments made by a member of the legislature that took up quite a bit of time on the floor, so things have slowed down there. We anticipate, at least for tomorrow, it'll be slow, continued to be slowed down. At some point, typically in legislature, there's a breakout, and things just start moving pretty quickly again, and we'll expect to see that. There's one bill on final reading scheduled for tomorrow, don't know if we'll actually get to it because of that, and that's the one dealing with, LB 431, that deals with school construction, bidding the minimum threshold for going to bid. And then there's two bills that this board approved, seeking introduction, that's LB 513, which deals with leasing of school property, and LB 362, which would increase the number of acres available for which eminent domain would be available. Those bills are both out of committee, both without dissenting votes from the committee and without negative testimony at the committee hearing. Because of that, they at least meet the qualifications for consent calendar. We've worked with the sponsoring senators' offices, and the sponsoring senators have requested that they be on consent calendar. Consent calendar is simply similar to here. Things move more quickly, they're not controversial. We, consent calendar's not been announced yet, so we don't know if they'll make that. That's what we have, as Mrs. Fay mentioned, there's no action items from the committee. Be happy to try to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions? If not, thank you so much for being here so late. Mrs. Williams?
I move that the Board of Education go in a closed session for the protection of public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the superintendent, secretary to the board, legal counsel, Tony Turnquist, I'm going to mess up Connie's last name, Connie Telfian, pending litigation, real estate and legal advice.
Let me remind the board that the purpose for closed session is for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the superintendent, secretary to the board, legal counsel, Tony Turnquist, and Connie Telfian, pending litigation, real estate, and legal advice. Let the record reflect that the board went into closed session at 10:01 PM.